...in need, the people in neighborhood don't have to do it. And I just wanted to compliment the council on their decision to allow the school department to do that, because I know the town had control of the building for a little while. So I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to give credit where credit was due and say thank you. They've been phenomenal neighbors since they've been there, and I'm sure it'll continue into the future. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? The general public comment? Yes?
Hi.
Good evening.
Jake Woody Hill, 586 Old Main Street. I read the meeting minutes. I read the minutes from the last town meeting on the 22nd, and my name was in there, and I wanted to just mention one thing. My understanding, and I believe after talking to Graham that I could have been wrong, was that when he appointed me the opportunity to volunteer for the CAC committee, that if residents had concerns and they voiced them to me, that I could pass them on, okay, as a volunteer. But now I am of the understanding that if I'm doing that and I mention that I am this volunteer, that it doesn't necessarily speak for the members of the committee. And that I understand. One thing I would like to ask is this. If the volunteers of the CAC are given tasks to do by the council, by the manager, where do those tasks originate from? And I would think that they would originate from the concerned citizens and taxpayers. So if I have done something I wasn't supposed to do and represent a committee that I wasn't supposed to represent, I apologize, but I would continue then as a private citizen to bring any concerns that I hear necessary to the well-being of the town.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Leo Rattakis, 280 Husne Kill Road. I'm here tonight regarding the Lake Tioga issue with the flood zone from FEMA. Last week, you received a letter, it was CC to everyone here, and also the town manager, requesting additional information from the town regarding the flood zone in Lake Tioga. As you know, about a year and a half ago, we resolved the issue with Johnson's Pond, saving many of the residents hundreds of dollars, if not thousands of dollars, in flood insurance to FEMA. Last December 18th, when we had the joint meeting with the General Assembly, I brought that issue up, and you did receive the letter from Wes Warwick. You wrote back on January 24th to Congressman Landjevan, and his response was that on January 26th, you were supposed to identify some other issues regarding the engineering. Just want to make sure that this is going to be addressed as soon as possible. There is a lot of residents in the Lake Tioga area that are paying a lot of money for flood insurance. I believe one of my constituents, Ron Gisarello, has always been calling me on the issue. But again, if you can possibly try to answer Congressman Landjevan's concern. What happened is, I guess, a few letters went back and forth, and that was not answered. I guess the town has not yet identified any updating engineering data to provide to FEMA. So I'm not sure what the timetable is. Time is its essence. We don't want to put this aside, because there are a lot of elderly people that do live on the Lake Tioga area. I know it's your district, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
And if you do want a copy of the letter, I have one here for you.
We have it.
Oh, you have it? Okay, great.
We sent it out to all of you folks, and we have it, and the town manager has it, and, you know, they'll take it for where they can, you know, have it looked into further economically, whether the town's going to be able to come up with a new response to FEMA, you know, that remains to be seen.
Right. It's only you need to provide, I think, updated engineering data, like you did in Johnson's Pond. I mean, we resolved that issue for the whole.
Right. Different situation, but you're right. It was, they found FEMA, admitted they found an error. FEMA admitted they did not find any error. And I don't want to go into it now.
Sure.
But I appreciate your public comment, and I certainly am close to home also, because I've lived in District 4 for 39 years now. So, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it greatly.
If you could give us an update, maybe 30 days, Mr. President.
If the town has one, if the town has one, we'll make it known, District report.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
And also, Representative Surfer is also awaiting a response, too. Thank you.
If there's a new response, we'll send out the word. If not, no news, it's the same news. But thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Down in the middle aisle?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Lisa Castelli, 15 Chopin Street, Towneville, Rhode Island. I just have a question. I wanted to know why Crosswaters Engineering is, keeps going up Fairview Avenue. Does that have something to do with the sewers?
But.
Crossman.
Crossman?
Crossman, I'm sorry.
I can't answer that, but, you know, we can look into it.
Because they were there when we started the whole sewer, and.
I can tell you, Crossman Engineering has more than just Coventry as a client, and Fairview is a state-owned street, so they might be doing work for the state.
Okay.
But that might be a better question for Crossman Engineering.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir? Good evening.
Hi. Kevin Snow, 36 Enderwood Street.
Yes.
Last week, I believe, or the week before, there was a meeting at the State House where our local legislatures brought forward some resolutions to the state legislature regarding the mandating of sewers. Mr. Gorham stated during that meeting that all of these people were there strictly because of one person on Hazard Street who did not want the sewers. That one person on Hazard Street, we all know who he is. Unless you have a twin, Mr. Gorham, then it would appear that you yourself, like Councilmen McGee, Shibley, and LaBosse-Nair, have continued to ignore our pleas since the meeting at the high school and every town council meeting since then, refused to answer our questions, as well as, which was on full display tonight, the meeting, Councilman McGee and Bacon. That one resident on Hazard Street seems to have you gentlemen a little bit nervous, judging by how Mr. Shibley, I saw the video of the town hall meeting, I wasn't able to make it, I was working, when that one resident was allowed to ask questions with no time limit. You seem very uncomfortable answering any questions. Mr. LaBosse-Nair, you, to your credit, was answering any question that was presented, and you mentioned also, Mr. Shibley, at the meeting, at the town hall meeting, that when asked whether people were who supposedly were in favor of the sewers, you said maybe, you said you didn't know, maybe they were intimidated by the people who, you know, who want the sewers, who don't want the sewers. Maybe.
Can I answer up?
Sure.
Are you talking about the Saturday?
The Saturday town hall meetings.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Just to put it in perspective, it's.
I'm sorry.
That's right, not a town hall meeting, but that's okay. I understand what you're saying.
No, it's a town hall.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I appreciate your comments.
Oh, I'm not done.
Well, not yet.
Not yet. I still got, I still got my time. All right. So that's kind of how we feel, like we're being bullied by you gentlemen who are trying to shove this mandate down our throats. I think if, you seem to pick out the less favorable income areas, such as Lake Tioga, which I grew up right on Lake Tioga. I've lived here my entire life, 51 years. But there's never any mention about Johnson's Pond, which, if I'm correct, is the largest body of water in the town. But because they have the money, like the Janikys and whatnot, it's like you don't want to piss them off. Kind of like a bully, you want to pick on the weakest and not the strongest. Oh, I'm not. So I challenge you, Mr. Shibley, to have another meeting at the high school, to take a roll call. I can take a roll call now if you want, of people who are in favor or who are against it. If you have the guts, have another meeting at the high school and listen to us, because you haven't listened to us the entire time. That's all.
Thank you. Any other way? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Go on, the one. Good evening.
James Blank, 43 Hazard Street. I just wanted to ask, at the last town council meeting, a bunch of roads, Arnold Road, Riot Point Ave., Sand Street.
If I could have attention while the speaker is speaking, we're having a hard time hearing ourselves. Thank you.
Sorry. The last town council meeting, four roads were deemed substantially complete. That would be Arnold Road, Riot Point Ave., Sand Street, and Hazard Street. I just wanted to know if a supplemental document was sent to all those residents, letting them know that they have the opportunity to choose whether or not they want those sewers, and also if they were made aware of all of the costs associated to the sewer project, because as you all know, the first notice that went out only talked about one cost, and that was just the tie-in, which is about one-tenth of the total cost. So I didn't know if that notice had gone out. I don't know if you guys can make a comment on it.
Just a moratorium, nothing's going out right now.
But people are making decisions to tie in, I believe that they have the opportunity to, correct? I just want to make sure that they're probably notified and have the knowledge.
Okay. Mr. Waters?
I'm not sure if a supplemental document was sent to each resident on those streets. It was just intent. I can look into that.
I just think that they should feel that we, they should have the knowledge of the fact that they have the choice and the cost.
We had, had residents, and it was, not just those streets, but any street that has sewers on the upcoming sewer subcommittee agenda. There's two residents that'll be coming before the subcommittee about tie-ins that aren't on those streets. So.
But they don't have the significant assessments, like the people on those four streets, correct?
Well, as far as the letter to the particular streets, I'd have to look into that to see if something was sent out. I don't believe so. As far as the assessment costs, when they call in to request a tie-in, they're made aware of the costs at that point in time.
They are made aware of it?
Yes.
Not just the tie-in, but the assessment, the current one and all that good stuff?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And then, since you guys are discussing the resolution on the sewer subcommittee, I just wanted to, I did reference it at our informal town hall meeting this weekend, but I do think an attorney should be present at the sewer subcommittee, because many decisions were made from 2011 to 2017 where they never came in front of the town council. So instead of acting as an advisory board, they were actually making decisions. They weren't supposed to. And I just want to make sure that all residential, whether they're single-family or multi-unit, if they're, if they're rental, or if they're corporate tie-ins, that they're all discussed at the sewer subcommittee meetings, and perhaps even mention the assessment that they'll get if the tie-in is approved. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Yes? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Janice Denson. I reside at 670 Nadia Road. Just.
I think it's on.
Sorry. Just to clarify, regarding correcting the prior resident that spoke and called the meeting over the weekend, the town hall meeting, President Shibley.
I was just asking what you were referring to. I don't know what you're saying.
So when you were correcting him, telling him that it was not a town hall, I'm just clarifying, that is what was described. Mr. LaBosse-Nair was very gracious to hold those over the last several meetings, several months, and he did specifically say it was a town hall meeting. So the resident stating that was correct.
Very good.
So, we don't need to.
All right. Thank you.
I'm not done.
Okay.
So, at the last town council meeting, a resolution was passed at the end. It was voted by three councilmen. The two councilwomen did not vote, did not get a chance to vote. It was passed. That did have to do with, I just want to clarify, I'm asking to make sure, that did have to do with the construction on Arnold Road, correct? With the sewers' construction? You're not going to answer?
I didn't understand your question. The last?
The resolution that was passed at the end of the town council meeting.
Right.
So that was actually, there was much discussion on it being two separate issues that really should have been separated, but it was all in one vote.
The legal council said it would be all one vote, yes.
Okay. And that did have to do with the construction on Arnold Road, and that you were, you were clarifying that that was substantially complete part of that resolution, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay. So that includes the roadwork, which includes the embers and construction, correct? So this way, they can get paid, right? Is that not?
No.
Part of the process?
That's incorrect.
No?
That's incorrect.
Okay. So when you declare it substantially complete, what are you doing in that?
So, when the resolution was discussed, because it's, when a road is declared substantially complete, it means that the sewer has been inspected and deemed certified to have sewage put through it, so it is ready to go. No further sewer line construction is needed. So they've finished construction. As in Hazard Street, there's still paving that needs to be done, but the sewer line itself is substantially complete.
Okay. But specifically having to do with Arnold Road, so in order to pay any of those, those contracts, those contracts, that has to be declared prior to that? So it does have an effect, correct?
The practice of town staff in the past has been, when a line is declared substantially complete, that is the staff's cue to send out assessments to the homeowners. So that is not being done in this instance. In this instance, the only thing that's being done is residents who live along those lines who would like to tie in can come forward and request to be tied in. So that's the only thing that is permitted as of right now. And I'm ensuring that no assessments, other than for residents who want to tie in, go out along those lines.
Arnold Road as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. It's a three-minute?
Was it just a long?
Yes. All right. Thanks. Anyone else? That's it.
My phone says it's not three minutes.
All right. Well, Lars is done. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Public comment? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have E. E1, applications for renewal for campground licenses. Mr. Waters?
Before we get into that, Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to request, when we get down to the letter F, that the presentation and resolution authorizing the town to join the opioid litigation be bumped up to number one.
Okay.
Just because we have.
Yes.
They're waiting.
Well, what? I don't think, you mean, right now?
No.
Ahead of the campground?
Yeah.
That's all right. Okay. If that's okay with the council? The request has been made for F3 on the presentation with the legal counsel here.
I think we can. The campground, we could probably address. It's probably been addressed a few times, and then that'll be next.
Okay.
All right. Let's get, the campground's been on several months now.
It's the top.
Right. It'll be top of number one on F.
I'm sorry.
All right. So let's go back to applications for renewal of campground licenses, number one. And I suppose we take these one at a time, as recommended?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So Waters Edge.
At this point, we need a motion and a second, then discussion.
Do we go public hearing again?
No.
We already have, right?
We can do public hearing.
Right. Okay. A motion to approve Waters Edge 1A at this time.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Could we wait a second before we vote? I didn't get a chance to say about any discussion.
Oh, all right. I asked. I didn't hear anything. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to make, I just want to say that I'm very happy that it went into the minutes of last week, or the last meeting, that I asked if Mr. Anderson was threatening us with litigation, if we denied the license for Waters Edge, that he would sue us, and he did say absolutely. So to me, that's extortion and blackmail. Not unusual in this instance. I have to say, I'm, again, the only reason we do, for those of you who don't know the sewer, the reason we do have year-round camping is because the president of a town council in the past actually owned one of the campgrounds. Now, let me say, that campground, to me, is well-kept.
Extremely liable.
And it's doing, and it's a nice campground. I have no problems with it. We're talking about Waters Edge. I asked the minimum housing inspector to go out there. I don't know what he was looking at, because I don't think he had a checklist. But honestly, I don't, I would hate to be a neighbor to Waters Edge. And in my opinion, it's, it's brought down the housing values, the property values of the homes around it. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't think they need a year-round camping license.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three in favor, two oppose. Next, one B. Oroho Campground.
Camp Yoho.
Oroho.
Motion to approve license.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three, two. Next, one C. Hickory Ridge Campground.
Motion to approve license.
Okay. Motion made, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Five, zero. Okay. Thank you. Now we're down to F, and a motion has been made. If we could release the request.
I don't think we need a motion. If we need a motion, we just think.
Just move. All right. We'll move F3. Three is now being discussed. Mr. Gorham, would you like to do the introduction on this?
I think, I think it would be appropriate to call Attorney Eva Manquuso and her, I guess, her entourage up to talk about the proposal that they've made to the town that's on the agenda for approval for tonight.
Okay. Very good. Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Gorham, members of the council. As you know from our meeting and executive session, my name is Eva Manquuso, and with me tonight is our National League Counsel, Archie Lamb. Last time, Mr. Magazine was here, and we're not doing a big switch on you, it's just that we're, these gentlemen are all over the country, so it's who is available to come in today. So Mr. Lamb is our National League Counsel.
Welcome.
I'd like to, we began the presentation last time to talk to you about what we're doing nationally. I want to tell you that we're updated today. As of this morning, we had 20 cities and towns join.
Can you pull the mic up, Ms. Manquuso, just so I can hear you? Thank you.
Sure. You're, I think you're the only person that's ever asked me to speak up.
No, I'm talking, I hear you. I'm really hearing you.
I was going to say, I probably have schoolteachers that are watching this right now saying, that's the first time that happened, ever happened, Councilman. So basically, we're, we're now up to 20 cities and towns in Rhode Island have joined on to join us in the fight against the distributors and manufacturers of the opioid litigation. I'd like to defer to Mr. Lamb to go into the details of the lawsuit, so that you can, and feel free to ask us both any questions when we finish. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think you have all been subjected already to the presentation in general. If I might just bring you up to speed on where we are currently outside the state of Rhode Island. Our coalition, that Eva is an important part of nationally, consists of six law firms besides Eva's law firm. We represent over 250 cities, towns, and counties in about 30 different states. Personally, I've gone to about 100 of these meetings of city councils and women and county commissions, and I just have to say, God bless you, as you endeavor with all the things that you've got to deal with, it's really been an experience for me to see what you deal with on a day-to-day basis. But one thing that's been universal as I've traveled the country is the tragedy that is the opioid crisis. I know it's here. Statistics show that. It's a lot of other places. We would be privileged to represent you. Our firms collectively will advance all the expenses necessary to prosecute the case. That includes hiring expert witnesses. I don't know how many of you saw the 60 Minutes piece about two months ago. Two of the DEA experts that were witnesses in that piece are retained experts for us. The cases, we, we have, our group has cases in about 20 different states filed in federal court, as these cases would be. They've all been consolidated in Cleveland, Ohio, in front of Judge Dan Polster, and he has said from the bench, people are dying every day. Let's go about the business of trying to get this thing resolved. We're working hard to do that. You saw, I think, Purdue Pharma has stopped marketing to doctors, which you'd think is a little bit late, but it's a step in the right direction. The only purpose of our litigation, to be clear, is to hold what we believe to be the manufacturers and distributors responsible for the excessive shipment, the flooding, if you will, of our communities of these drugs, far beyond that which is necessary. And by the way, there are people in our society that need these drugs. People at the end of life, people that suffer serious arthritic disease on a day-to-day basis. We're not saying the drugs need to be eliminated. We're saying there needs to be a method of distribution that makes medical and scientific sense. Just so you know, the key defendants in our case are the three large distributors, which is interesting, because very few people really know, they know the manufacturers make the drugs. What they have a hard time understanding is what the distributors do. But what the distributors do is they deliver the drugs. The evidence that we have come up with in the lawsuits that originated in West Virginia are, they deliver drugs to a town of 432 people, 11 million prescriptions. We say that that is inappropriate. We say it's a violation of their federal duty under the Controlled Substances Act. And our sole objective here is to raise enough money to bring back to the cities, towns, and counties of this country, to your coffers, because you will have an individual claim, and help you address the community plague of addicted citizens that you have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and for which you really don't have adequate monies to take care of. And so that means treatment over the next 10 years of the persons that are addicted in your community, and that's what we're fighting for, for you, to generate the monetary amount to assist you to deal with that. And that's what the lawsuit's about.
The only thing that I want to add on behalf of the statistics that I've looked at, the CDC puts together lots of statistics, and one that jumped off the page at me was that in 2016, in Kent County, 71 prescriptions for every 100 people. Think about that. For every 100 people, there were 71 prescriptions. And that's just in 2016. Providence County was at 58 percent, and Washington County, 63 percent. So the prescriptions are rampant.
What they have a hard time understanding is what the distributors do. But what the distributors do is they deliver the drugs. The evidence that we have come up with in the lawsuits that originated in West Virginia are, they deliver drugs to a town of 432 people, 11 million prescriptions. We say that that is inappropriate. We say it's a violation of their federal duty under the Controlled Substances Act. And our sole objective here is to raise enough money to bring back to the cities, towns, and counties of this country, to your coffers, because you will have an individual claim, and help you address the community plague of addicted citizens that you have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and for which you really don't have adequate monies to, to take care of. And so that means treatment over the next 10 years of the persons that are addicted in your community, and that's what we're fighting for, for you, to generate the monetary amount to assist you to deal with that. And that's what the lawsuit's about.
The only thing that I want to add on behalf of the statistics that I've looked at, the CDC puts together lots of statistics, and one that jumped off the page at me was that in 2016, in Kent County, 71 prescriptions for every 100 people.
What?
Think about that. For every 100 people, there were 71 prescriptions. And that's just in 2016. Providence County was at 58 percent, and Washington County, 63 percent. So the prescriptions are rampant. And as my counsel said, and I think he said it quite eloquently, is that the opioids have a place in our society, but the three big distributors had one job, and that was to be the gatekeeper. Their job was supposed to sound the bells and alarms when manufacturers were going in and targeting areas that had an uptake in numbers, and instead, they used it for their own benefit. So that's the evidence that we've uncovered, and to this date, as Archie pointed out, he is one of our National Lead Counsels, so he's been there with the judge. I want Coventry to be involved in this case, as I want every city and town to be, because I want to hold them responsible and make them have to pay for the cleanup. You cause a problem, you clean it up. It's very simple. And that's what we're looking at. So if you have any questions, we're glad to answer them. I know we spoke extensively in executive session, but I'm glad to answer any other questions.
Mr. McGee's leading off.
Yeah, Ms. Menku, so if you could, just state so that people could hear, the three pools, what this money's going to. Some people are wondering why, you know, they think there's not an opioid epidemic in Coventry. There is, every town has it. I just, maybe I'm sheltered, I never realized there was that much of an epidemic in town. But can you just explain, has you explained to us, and does that know how, how the money's going to be dispersed, and it's not just to pay back whatever we have spent?
Right. And the big, the real big part, so one, one part of, we have different buckets of damages, obviously, that Mr. Lamb and our team is, is fighting for. And the first one is for the costs in the past, which is the law enforcement costs, and the cost of Narcan, and the, and the training, all of that. The second bucket is, is talking about treatment. And when I say treatment, I mean regional treatment, and real treatment. You know, the big thing that we're learning from, from the experts here is that, you know, opiates stay in your system sometimes six to eight months. When people are addicted, we send them to 30-day treatment plan, treatment programs, and then say that they're not successful when they relapse. So we're talking about real treatment. Archie is leaving here tomorrow morning and going to Washington DC to meet with a group of doctors who will be our experts, to put together treatment plans, real treatment plans that can address the problem. So that's the second one. And the third one, which I think is the most important, is the education piece. We need to have, if you think about what we've done in education around alcohol, and information, and allowing, and saying to kids, listen, this is dangerous. We have to train an entire generation of children, and young people, and millennials, that the drugs that are in mom and dad's cupboard are just as dangerous as the heroin that's on the street. So that education piece takes a lot of money. And as I'm talking, if you talk to any of your police officers, they'll say, yeah, we do it as part of our training, or we go into the schools, or the teachers try to do it as part of health. I'm talking about a, a real major force going forward. So that, to a town like Coventry, that doesn't have a plague like some of the other cities and towns do, that's the bucket that I think can be most helpful to you. But the most important part of this lawsuit is that it's a multi-district litigation suit, which means it will be the town of Coventry versus Big Pharma. It'll be the town of Coventry versus the manufacturers. So that in the end, the damages comes back to you as the leaders of the town to say, yeah, this is what we want to do here. So that's the three buckets.
Thank you very much for that. I just want, in my opinion, it's a win-win situation for the town. I mean, I don't know what we can get out of this. I mean, I hate that not sign on and, and end up, that there could have been a, you know, potential to have a lot of money to, I'm more concerned with treatment centers if there's that much of an epidemic. But I, I think it's a great idea, it's going to come to no cost to the taxpayers at all.
Right.
So, I mean, that's a big, that's a big thing, too. I agree, no.
Yeah, that's, and we're upfronting all the costs for the litigation, which are substantial. I mean, there's no one law firm that could do this on their own, respectfully. I mean, just like taking on tobacco, just like taking on in California, the lid paint. You know, you're talking about millions of dollars in expert witness fees to put this case together. That's the consortium's joining together to do that. And it will never be taxpayer money, and it'll just be money back. So whatever we're able to get for the town of Coventry, what we're saying is, listen, you caused the problem, you need to pay for the cleanup.
I just want to thank you for coming and giving us this.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Gorm.
Just, just to clarify, since, I know we talked about this in closed session, Attorney Menku so, but the public's here tonight, the, the meeting's been, being streamed and so forth. So I have a question. It's no cost to the town, and you indicated that the, the costs will be advanced by the law firms who are taking up the cause, and there's a contingent fee agreement of 30%.
That's correct.
And you're asking the town council to authorize that?
That's correct.
Which means that 30% of the amounts recovered will be paid to the attorneys and divided among them as they see fit. And the expenses, I just want to talk about for one second.
Sure.
The expenses that you advance, even if you are unsuccessful, you're not going to seek to recover the expenses that you advanced to pursue this lawsuit. You're not going to seek to recover those expenses from the town of Coventry.
That's correct. And in the agreement, as you know, Mr. Gorm, I put that in big, bold letters, because it's very important that people understand that. And that is customary in personal injury work, that we advance, we take the risk. I mean, we've put together the lawsuits, and, and we're putting this together as, as part of the, the monies to advance public health. That's what we do.
So when Councilmember McGee says that there's really no risk to the town, then he's, he's correct?
Correct. Just like the other 20 cities and towns that have signed on, and I've been on TV in their local kitchens, when people are watching the town council, saying the exact same thing over and over again. And as you know, Mr. Gorm, I am Rhode Island-born and Rhode Island-bred. When I die, I'll be Rhode Island dead. That's the You're-I-Fight song.
I never said that.
But as, you know, I'm, I'm here, and, and I think that that's the benefit that you get, is that as local counsel, my duty, not only ethically as an attorney, but also, when I first heard about this, I said, this is something Rhode Island should sign on to. We have an epidemic, and this is an opportunity to bring in the funds to do it correctly.
Well, thank you for your foresight. Thank you.
I have one question. You mentioned up to 20 cities and towns. Would you have that updated list for us? Or is that just being put together?
Sure, no, I, I have the list if you, if you want to read it.
Well, I mean, I didn't know if you had it to disseminate.
Sure, I'm glad to read it, because they make in town.
Well, okay, if, if you don't mind, if you had a list, I just collected, but I, I was kind of curious, because I know it was like 14, and then...
I have a cheat sheet in front of me. I can tell you Barrington, Bristol, Barville, Central Falls, Chalston is meeting tonight, as Coventry is. We have Cumberland, East Providence, Gloucester, Hopkinton is meeting tomorrow, Jamestown on the 19th, I have Johnston, Middletown, I have a phone conference with tomorrow, Narragansett, North Kingstown, North Providence, Pawtucket, Richmond, Situate, I believe Situate voted on February 8th. I do not have that in hand yet, that's my note here. Smithfield, Warwick, Westerly, West Greenwich, and West Warwick. That's where we are so far.
So just on the, on the major cities, we're just missing maybe what Cranston and Providence?
Cranston and Providence. Cranston, I'm in, I'm in constant conversation with, Warwick's on board, yes.
All right, well, it sounds good. 20 is more than half the state.
Yeah. By what, actually, we're around 61% of the, you know, I really had nothing to do this afternoon, so I was doing percentages.
I like stats.
I know you do, that's why I did it. That's why I did it, you know?
Okay.
I have a little experience with former police officers.
Yeah, well, you've got, you've got, you've got good, good, what was it, family traits.
Yeah, that's right. So we're about 61% of the population of Rhode Island right now, that's covered in those 20 citizen towns.
Well, thank you very much for, for that answer. Mrs. Carlson?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you coming back again and doing this, because I think people needed to understand what's going on.
Sure.
My only comment to, for the council, and actually for town manager, Mr. Gorm, is that if we vote, or when we vote, if we sign on to this, I want to be sure that this is, any recovery funds that we do get are absolutely designated in a separate fund for this issue, and not sucked into the general fund, and not used to pay anything else off. I think it's very important that if we've gone through this.
Yeah. I, I think, I think Mr. Lamb can address that.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the...
Just so you know, I was in Rhode Island about 20 years ago, and ended up representing the Rhode Island Medical Community in a case where we represented 28 state medical associations. At the end of that case, monies were generated, and there were some parameters tied to how the monies were dispersed according to the allegations in the complaint and the misconduct that the defendants were held accountable for. And we will have the same sort of, at the end of the case, fortunately, or hopefully, we'll be looking at monies to be distributed based on certain metrics of injury. How many addicts are here? How much, how many of those, you extrapolate through this formula, how many will survive? How many will relapse? How many may die? And so there are metrics that are put together on what the damages will be for that treatment plan. And the monies will be tied to uses under that scope, because remember, we have to ultimately be approved by this federal judge in Cleveland, and, and he or she is going to be extremely interested in and demand that there's close parameters for the dispersion of monies.
So that's it. I know you do have the, the damages through a metric system is in the resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
The other question I had was, do we need to hear from the chief at all regarding this?
I know he's in favor of it, so...
I mean, I, he might want to say something. Thank you.
Thank you. Colonel?
Sir? Well, I sat through the first briefing, right, in the, in for the town manager when she talked, when they came and briefed, and it's the worst scourge I've seen in 23 years in Coventry. Let's say we have multiple overdoses every week. A lot of people survive because of Narcan, but the expenses are there. You see, in the email I sent, the outreach we've been doing with our video online, Facebook Live, we're going to read tomorrow on NBC 10, doing a feature on Coventry, Coventry's been so fired on this issue. And so we're no different than any town that's, you know, suffering through this, and, you know, particularly recently, the baby that passed away, which, you know, we believe is caused by exposure to fentanyl. Three of our offices have had exposure to fentanyl, been taken to the hospital. So it has definitely changed our protocols. We've stopped in place. We don't test anything that's, we think has fentanyl in it. It's really a hazmat situation, all the time we think we're dealing with fentanyl. It's definitely changed the way we're dealing with it every day, our place, and so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Colonel. Mr. Gorm, do you have a...
I just have one, I'm, I'm pretty sure I understood that from Attorney Lamb and Attorney Menku so, the idea is that if the case is settled, it will be in the form of a consent judgment that'll be managed by the court. Is that correct?
Well, um, from the, well, first of all, the, the benefit is that you'll be way involved right at the outset, so that with the Colonel talking about, you know, what, how we fill those buckets, you know, you'll have involvement in the beginning. So it's not just that, it's not a top-down situation where you'll read about it, and then all of a sudden have to fill it in. So, yes, what we anticipate is that there's going to be parameters around certain amounts of money. But they will be dictated by what you have told us, and we have seen through our experts in Coventry, meet the needs of the people here, so...
But is the court going to supervise the distribution through...
Not usually, but go ahead, no.
The court won't supervise, but it will approve. In other words, we will, we will do all the work in terms of putting it together, outlining, and having witnesses testify about why this is, is both scientifically, medically, and otherwise dependable, so the judge will make that approval. But here's what's important, is that these, these big three that distributed, they made $493 billion delivering drugs last year. They are not going to roll over. One of the reasons that it's important for you to have counsel, like our group, that has actually tried these cases in court, they may not settle. We may have to go to court. We may have to spend on a, on a sample trial, $3 million to put on a case on behalf of the state of Ohio, for example. Because last year, last year, the state of West Virginia, 1.8 million people, they estimate $8.8 billion. Last year, it cost that community. This is not a case where we're going to bring back to you $500,000 to deal with this problem. These, these companies are big, they have the best law firms in the world. We, we are committed to spend the money it takes, to hold them accountable, to deal with tens and tens and hundreds of billions of dollars of mess that's got to be cleaned up. And if they don't pay something that we could be proud to come back and provide to you, we will go to trial with them.
I understand that you're, you're going to be prepared to go to trial, or I'm more interested in, just out of curiosity, but to some degree, how the money's going to be supervised, is if it is settled, will there nonetheless be, you said it has to be approved by the court. I mean, typically, a court doesn't approve something unless it's involved, and the typical way it's involved is through a consent judgment.
There will be a consent judge, all right. So, so there's a consent judgment on the amount, there's a consent judgment on the metrics. But ultimately, I think the, maybe, I hope I'm answering your question, there will be a special master designated to deal with how the monies are split up amongst the cities, towns, and counties who are claims.
Okay.
And, and so there will be a, below the judge, a master set of people trained to make sure the dispersants are done accurately and according to your pro-rata share of the monies generator.
We did it in Rhode Island in the station fire litigation case.
I'm, I'm familiar with that, and I think it was, will he appor?
Bill Port, exactly.
Okay, so it's going to be the same?
If that's the same, it's, and on a very small, you know...
Same methodology.
The same methodology is applied. So we've done it in Rhode Island. I, I actually was one of the seven law firms, as you know, that we joined the coalition together here locally to, to handle that case. So I was involved in it, and, yeah, it's a, it's a very detailed, intricate part. There's no, here, here's a couple of billion dollars thrown into the general fund. That's just not the way it works, so...
Okay, that makes sense. I just, there's one thing I was curious about, and you've answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, another question.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Our fire departments are not part of the municipality. Have you reached out to Hopkins Hill, Central, Western, and Anthony?
I have not as of yet, because the way we are handling them at this point is that as a third-party beneficiary to the town itself of which they're in, they have asked for a presentation, and we will do it. It's just that, you know, I'm kind of an analysis energy person, but it's been busy.
I know.
All your town councils like to meet on Mondays and Tuesdays, by the way.